Seven o'clock. Let's call this regular board meeting of the Silver Falls School District to order.
Uh, did he go to ten?
Okay. Please join me in the flag sleuth.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is our consent agenda. Do you have a motion for approval?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. Okay, next up is our student representatives, Larissa Kesh and Olivia Myers.
Good evening, I hope all of you enjoyed our sunny days that we had recently. March has been a busy month with lots of fun events at the high school. Let's start with an update on sports. The boys' basketball team finished third at the state tournament. They beat Crater 57 and 39, lost a tough one to Olsonville 45 and 50, and they won against Willamette for third place, 60 and 41. They had a terrific season finishing 50, 20, 25, no, 52, 25 and 3, overall third place, 15 to 1 in league play, capturing the Mid-Willamette Conference Championship for the second straight season. Levi Nielsen was named to the second team All-State Tournament selection.
Girls' basketball. The girls' basketball team finished in fourth place at the state tournament. They beat Putnam 57 to 36, lost 46 to 57 to La Salle Prep, and lost a close one to Crescent Valley 45 to 49 for fourth place. They had a great season finishing 14 and 2.
Dance team has their state championships this Friday, March 15th, at the Veteran Memorial Coliseum.
Spring sports. Now we have spring sports starting up. Tennis, track and field, baseball, softball, and golf. Our clubs and activities have been very busy as well and successful.
Speech and debate team competed at the Diana De Quayz De Q Invitational on March 2nd, where seven students made it to semifinals or above. On March, the team attended the OSAA District 3 State Qualifying Tournament. Speech and debate will be sending a squad of 10 students to the state championship in April.
Band. The SHS bands are getting ready for the festival season. The Went Ensemble will be performing at Clackamas Community Band Festival, March 12, Western Oregon, April 4th, and Mid-Willamette League Festival, April 11. The band hopes to qualify at one of these events for the OSAA State Championships held in May.
This March, Key Club has been focusing on running a book drive for the many libraries they're planning to put up around the town.
Interact Club has been working on preparing for the Daddy Daughter Dance that is happening this Saturday, March 16th, at the high school.
Mr. SHS is having a bingo night to raise money for Medical Teams International, April 4th.
This is all we have for you tonight. Enjoy your spring weather and we'll see you next time. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is our first opportunity for public comment. Would anybody like to address the board?
Hi, guys. I'm Michelle. Uh, well, I'm here on behalf of SFBA, and Andy let me know earlier this past week that you guys were going to be discussing the potential to make up snow days. And so I took the opportunity to send out a survey to our membership to see kind of what their opinions were, what, you know, what they thought was the best way to handle this, what they would like to share with you as far as their thoughts were. And so I just wanted to come and share that information with you guys. So, one of the things that Andy asked us to consider was using the April 26th date as a potential day to go from a teacher professional, or a Teacher In Service Day and High School Grading Day to a Student Contact Day. And so that's something that the association needed to vote on to determine whether or not that would be okay with us to do that. But before I let you know what we decided on that, the hope of the majority of the teachers is that those days will not need to be made up, since the majority of our schools are on track with the state mandated hours. However, we do know that, you know, student contact time is important and we want to keep those hours up. So, we totally understand and are on board with making those days up if you feel that that's necessary. If that's your decision, our preference would be to convert that April 26th day. And coming in second place with the teachers was to use PLC time. So converting that early release time into student contact hours. And the least hopeful choice was to add days on to the end of the school year. And the main reason for that being that when we lose days in the middle of the year, teachers are already doing the work that it takes to adapt their schedules and to get our students where we need them to be for the lessons that they lost, for the time that they lost. And so adding that time on to the end of the school year, it just, it feels very unproductive for those. It doesn't really feel like it gets us anything in the end, other than checking that box of seat time. There were many suggestions from teachers that they'd like to see a plan put in place for this, so that we're not constantly having to revisit this conversation every year on a yearly basis. We know of several districts that build snow days into the contract, into the calendar. And then if they don't happen, then it's just a couple days early break. And so our licensed staff would like to see some consideration into making changes so that we don't have to have this conversation every time we lose time for inclement weather. And then the final, the final thing that they were actually kind of most passionate about in their responses was the thought that, I know two years ago, when we had to make up time, the kids made up time through early release, so they came back, or they didn't get to leave early on those days. But then the teachers also had to make up time that the kids weren't there for. And that was something that really didn't set well with the teachers. And the reason behind that is because, for those like Jennifer you know in education, teachers spend a lot of their own time outside of their contact hour to do their jobs well. I myself have logged 148 extra hours already this year. And that doesn't have anything to do with my role as the union president, that doesn't have anything to do with my leadership of the East Coast trip. That's just the extra hours that I've put in to do my job and to do it to the best of my ability. I, part of the survey, I asked teachers to estimate how many extra hours they thought they've already put in so far this year. And of the 162 people who responded to that survey, only nine had put in less than 26 extra hours. As far as inclement weather goes, we've lost less time than that. So only nine out of 162 teachers may or may not have already made up that time personally. So those are just some things that the licensed employees in the district would like for you to take into consideration tonight as you deliberate on whether or not those days are made up. And I actually have a packet for you that has some, I asked a question, what other information would you like the school board to consider before making this decision? And so these are the about 120 or so comments that teachers and counselors and any of our licensed staff put on here for you to consider before you make your decision. Or, you know, light reading for you later. I also have the teacher hours diagram. That's about it.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Yeah, single, single sided.
Michelle, we'll, we'll need some for the archives and we'll need copies for admin. So do you have extra?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. It's a discussion item and an action item for tonight. Okay, would anybody else like to address the board? Okay, moving on. Let's get to our discussion items. First item is our draft board goals for development of the 2019 and 2020 fiscal year budget. Now would be the time to talk about it and it is an act, yeah, it's an action item for later tonight, hopefully. We had a discussion about the last work session and I think we, I think we were, I was pretty, I was pretty satisfied with everything that was on there. I don't know what anybody else had to, where'd that, where'd that go?
That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. Oh, it's in here. There it is. So they were, we didn't really make any changes. It was the maintain the 2018, you know, there was five, six goals. Maintain the 2018 through 19 class size averages. Kindergarten, 20 students. Grades 1 through 8, 25 students. Grades 9 through 12, 27 students. Second goal was school and program allocations with maintain current levels of staffing. Third one was funding for state mandated physical education requirements for K5 students. Fourth was funding for management services, long-range facility planning consultant and committee efforts. An attendance boundary review consultant and committee efforts. Fifth goal was budget ending fund balance of a minimum, minimum 5% of the general fund revenue. And last is to apply this strategic visioning plan. There's, there seemed to be general agreement at the last meeting. Does anybody have any?
I have a question for clarification, and this is probably for Andy. The PE requirement, has there been any talk about, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this ahead of time, it just came to me. Have there been any talk about changing those PE requirements? Because I know that there's, they're kind of controversial.
There has been some relief following the past legislative session. There was a work group or a ruling committee that did make some roll-in suggestions which were approved, actually a couple of suggestions. One of those was that the requirement for a licensed physical education teacher to be the teacher of record for those for physical education was removed. So now a general education teacher is eligible to teach the PE requirements. And there were also roll-in changes made. It was, there was actually, and I can't say with certainty, but I believe it was either a K6 or a K8 requirement that would have meant the roll-in as soon as the 1920 school year, but then that has now been modified. So grades K5 are the only, now, are grades required to have 150 minutes per week by the 2000, excuse me, 2019-20 school year would be 120 minutes, and the 2020-21 school year will be 150 minutes at the K5. The 68, their roll-in begins the 2021-22 school year with 180 minutes per week, and 2022-23 with 225 minutes per week. All of those were, to, have been front-loaded and have been completed, I believe, by the 2020 school year.
So this number three is really to support our accomplishing the letter of the law?
It, it is. It's also intended to create that recognition in public, that here's another state and this one happens to be unfunded mandate. I mean, there's no specific earmarked dollars as there would be, or has been in the past with other things. But this is, this is a mandate that we're required to administer.
In the past, well, we've been, we've been getting lots of PE grants.
Yes.
Is it still being, is it still available, you think?
That's what we've been told.
Okay.
And we won't know with certainty whether we qualify for the PE grants until August? I believe it's generally August.
Okay.
So we have to budget accordingly, and then if we get the PE grants, we're able to.
Give us a little more.
To flex around.
Okay.
The timing is not ideal.
Yeah, and you stated that was the weekly minute requirement. How are we doing for, I mean, are we already, are we already matching those, or where are we at?
Yeah, we're complying with the law right now.
Okay, got it.
I mean, it's, sometimes it's, it could look a little different. You know, it may not be a traditional PE setting outside. It could be teachers working with students even in the classroom, doing physical education lessons even within the classroom. But yes, we're complying with those.
Okay. All right. A question for, and also another funding one, I asked about the grants. I think number four, the funding for the, for the long-range and attendance boundary services down, I think you said there was some grants available for that?
We have qualified for two, one grant. One is a planning grant for long-range facility planning, and I believe that one is $25,000. So we'll have access to that revenue. I believe the consultant work to help address for a full year, actually the planning efforts will likely go about, could go as much as 18 months, beginning this spring when we form the committee. But I estimate that that long-range facility planning could be in the $60,000 to $75,000 range, so it's, I don't believe that the grant is not going to cover.
It's not going to cover, okay.
No.
Okay. Okay.
Tom, I had a question for you.
Yeah.
I think it's mostly for you.
Sure.
So if, you know, there's nothing specifically on here about music, and we talked last time about the fact that we sort of are missing some key elements to that. I just want to make sure that approving this doesn't preclude that discussion should we get that additional information.
The information concerning what, I mean?
Well, there's other variables, right? So we don't know exactly what it's going to look like.
Oh, got it.
We don't know quite how, how all the variables in play are going to shake out. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we say yes, we approve this, I want to make sure we're not then going to turn around and say, we've approved this, therefore we can't discuss it. You know what I mean? I'm just, I'm trying to understand where.
Well, we have to have, I mean, I certainly don't mind, wouldn't mind discussing it. I mean, I'm certainly, for that, we'd have to get more approval to do something, but would there be enough time, when would the money?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm just asking if, what it means exactly in terms of that. So that's my question.
These are goals, and I certainly don't mind talking about it. Yeah.
It doesn't preclude that. We will, we can add things to the budget anytime we want to.
Okay, well, that's my clarification question.
Yeah, yeah.
Your words good enough for me?
Yeah, this is the sentence, though. Yeah, no, thanks.
Well, I just wanted to add that I think PE is important, regardless of the state law. I do think PE is important, especially now in our culture. So I support that.
For sure.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one more point of clarity? And that's related to goal number one, maintain 2018-90 class size averages. I want to be real clear that in the past, this goal has been around averages, and we've generally worked around averages, but by no means do I want to indicate to anyone that those are maximum sizes of classes within the school district. We do have elementary classes larger than 25 students, and we do have high school classes larger than 27 students. However, the comparison from year to year in a, in a, in a district that is, is very challenging to have equal number of class sizes across the district with our varied makeup of schools, we've always defaulted to average because that is at least a constant discussion point that we can use, and the state also measures us, or has in the past measured on averages. And so it feels right. But there's no question, we have some elementary classes in the 28, 29 range, 30 range, middle school classes and high school classes larger than that. And we also have some at the 12, 13, 14 range, especially at our K8 rural schools.
Yep.
For sure.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. This will be an action item later tonight. Does anybody have any? Okay. Next up, there's a new administrative rule concerning public charter schools. Andy, you want to explain the eight?
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I need to spend a lot of time on this. This is actually an administrative rule that's been recommended by Oregon School Boards Association. The information in this administrative rule comes largely directly out of state law. And OSBA has recommended we put this administrative rule on there simply because it's a local reference for community members who have an interest in initiating conversations of a charter school, that rather than them having to go directly to state law to go look for that detail, they can find the majority of the detail right in policy. So there, there really is nothing here other than making a couple of references to the superintendent as compared to the assistant superintendent or other changes like that. This is exclusively OSBA language. I think it's very helpful. I don't know that we have an interest at this time. In fact, I haven't heard any interest of starting another charter school in our school district, but if there were, we would have a very comprehensive document for those folks to refer to.
Okay. Okay. Okay, next up is make up days. We had a couple of snow days this year. Oh, so calendar, so the consideration of the 2018-19 calendar adjustment as a result of district-wide closure days on February 5th and 27th. There's two snow days, and I'm in favor, Andy gave us various options. I'd like to just make up, I'm in favor of just making up the one day on April 26th, converting that to Student Contact Day. I know I certainly wouldn't want to bring the kids back on a Monday just for one day. That would be completely non-productive. But I think, I think, I think a good compromise is just making up the one day.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, we obviously value instructional days because more instructional days get us more progress with student achievement. So yeah, I can, I can support, I can support that.
I support it as well. I think it's a reasonable compromise.
I think it's fine, too, but I, I also don't, don't think we need to bring the teachers back to make up a professional development day. I don't think that's necessary.
I agree with that.
They'd have to come back on a Monday and that'd be, yeah.
No.
Really, that would, that wouldn't be good.
You know, Tim, Tom, it sounds like, oh, I'm sorry. Right?
I'll interrupt you. No, I'm fine.
Forgive me. Lack of coothe. No, it sounds like if the, if the teachers are on board, and I'm sure the students would be happy, and it's, it's something that's going to appease everyone, that's probably a win-win.
I love it about the students being happy.
I'm trying to be positive. It's positive.
We're not, it's not our job to appease the students necessarily.
Just for those in the audience, it's Positivity Monday today, so.
Yeah, I support what Tim said, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I think they're built right. I would be supportive of trying to build in a couple, build in a, seeing how other districts build in a couple of snow days internally. That way, if there's a snow day, it's an automatic, there's an automatic process for how it's built in instead of having to do this.
Yeah, I think what happens sometimes is that there are like six years where you don't have a snow day until you stop building into the calendar, and then the next year, snow day. So I think it's easy to, to get out of the habit of building that in.
Yeah.
If we do build it in, we wouldn't have any.
That's right. We'll be prepared.
For sure. So, okay, well, that's an act.
The early release days will still happen, then we'll just change the 26th.
If I, if I understand the board correctly, it sounds like that's the way you're leaning. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to see their release still in place.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, moving on. Anybody, moving on. Does anybody have any other items you'd like to add to the discussion? Okay, so move on to administrative and staff reports. Andy's got a report on the 2018-19 Strategic Plan Performance Indicators. Take it away.
Yeah, you have a document in front of you titled, 18-19 Strategic Goals and Performance Indicator Progress Monitoring. You have three goals within your strategic plan that we track every year. And I've given you a three-year, three-year tally just to give you a reference. There are some significant gains being made, in some cases, results are flat, and so I'd like to cover those with you just as a reference. And keeping in mind that the full report will be given to you this, this summer after the end of the school year when we have the complete data. So goal number one is every student will attend 95% or more school days. And again, we're not, we don't have the, we don't have that tally, of course, until the end of the school year, but we have two performance indicators which we use to gauge that. And these performance indicators, by the way, are, are research-based. In fact, if you recall at the time, there was a researcher named John Hattie, and we referred to John Hattie's work when we identified the performance indicators that tend to be the leading indicators of certain goals. So in the case of high attendance, two of the indicators are how many students have no more than nine absences in a school year, and the second one being how many students attend within the first 30 days or first month of the school year. And so taking a look at the first performance indicator, students will have no more than nine absences in a school year using six absences as a reference at this point, since we're about two-thirds of the way through the school year almost. We have 62% of our K5 students. Last year, we actually had quite a bonus year. We had 73% of our students in the year prior, 66% of our students. So we're actually seeing a decrease at the K5 level. It's a little hard to indicate what that means, what, and again, we still have a few months left in the school year. However, all it would take, too, is one year of a bad flu bug going around, and we could see the impact as well. Grades 6 or 8, however, show a slight drop, because they're at 65%, drop from 72% last year and 62% the year prior. Grades 9 through 12, a slight drop from 66 to 59%, then up from two years ago at 52%. But district-wide, we're seeing a 62% on track to be at nine absences or fewer during the school year. Students attending every, every day during the first month of the school year is at or near the same as last year, slight drop in a couple of grades. Grades K5, interestingly, were at 61% of our students who attended every day during the first month of the school year as compared to two years ago, which was 46%. 52% of grades 6-8, down from 58% last year. 9-12 is 51%, down from 54% last year. You can see the first year, 16-17, that we tracked this information, there were some pretty significant, or pretty low numbers, and we at least are making gains upon those. District-wide, we're at 55% against compared to 58% last year. Goal two, 100% of K12 students will be on track to graduate, again, keeping in mind the similar reasoning behind the indicators that we use. The performance indicators in this case are K8 students will be at or above the grade level in reading and math, and students will earn at least six high school credits by the completion of ninth grade. So in the, the case of students be at or above grade level in reading and math, based upon the formative assessment, the STAR assessment windows that we've had to this point this school year, we're actually up from 63% last year in reading to 73% this year, a strong indicator of kids making great gains. We're also up in math from 76% last year to 83% this year, which is really very notable because we've had some deficiencies in math that have been difficult to overcome, especially at the, at the middle school and intermediate levels. And so this is pretty telling that the, the efforts that we're applying across the district from this indicator, using this indicator as a reference demonstrates that it's, it's working, it's effective. All bets are off until we say, let's see what the final outcome is at the end of the year, and until we see whether we see this kind of continued improvement over the course of, let's say, two or three years. But this indicator is quite promising. I was pleased to see that the references for the students in the freshman class who are on track to graduate, we really thought we had a banner year with our current sophomores and last year's freshmen being at 96% on track to graduate at the end of their freshman year. At the end of first semester, 98.5% of our current freshman students are on track to graduate, based upon six credits earned, total six credits earned. It's a slight drop because we also differentiate between total six credits earned and the six required credits to earn. So in some cases, a couple of kids may have six credits, but they may be, let's say, they may have failed a core class, but may have had double credits for all that. But that's pretty minimal, down to 97.7. So even using that reference as a standard, we have nearly 98% of our students in the freshman class on track to graduate, and that's really quite telling.
That's great.
Yeah, that's really good.
That's great.
And the third goal is 100% of teachers will meet or exceed the district standard for student engagement. We use our, our teacher observation and evaluation system to help us determine that, and we won't know any of that information until we have the full submission of, of observations completed in the, in the school year, and at that time, we'll have a number for you.
And so the next report is in July that we'll get regarding?
Yes, I believe it's July. Yes, I believe it's July, I prefer without looking into the school.
Thank you.
That's very cool to see the, the increases in the K8s in reading and math and then the high school credits too. Because, I mean, the attendance is down a little bit, but we only have, the district only has so much control over that. You know, a lot of that is up to parents and things like that, but hats off to our staff everywhere with those increases in reading and math and stuff. That's, that's awesome. I mean, 10% in reading, that's great. Good job, guys.
I appreciate it. Have you got any further comments, questions? Okay. Next up is a financial report. Steve Nielsen. I can feel better.
Yes, thank you very much. So tonight we have the general fund financial statement through the end of February. And through two-thirds of the year, we've received 80% of our budgeted current resources and it looks like we'll probably exceed that slightly. I really wanted to focus on the revenue side with the, all the items that flow in through the, the total formula revenue. And so what I've done is, it was good timing, the Department of Education came out with the latest update for the 2018-19 state school fund. It's the first one we've received since October 24th. So I've attached that in back of your financial statement. And the first page, the second page, first attachment, this is a sheet that, that anyone could find on the ODE website for all 198 school districts in the state. For ours, you click, when you click on state school fund, you have to scroll down about 132 pages to find ours, but, but you could find, find these, every estimate that they do for every year going back several years. And this is the most recent one for 1819. So you could see if you look down towards the bottom left in the box that says 2018-19 state school fund grant. We were talking a little bit about this in our budget committee informational forums that we had last week. Basically, the number, total formula revenue, you could see that our current estimate is That number is up by just under $600,000 from our last estimate. And the reason for that is because the amount per ADMW, the weighted ADM, is up by $41 per student. So that, that, right now, if you look across to the right, total formula revenue per extended ADMW, $8,256. So that number is up by $41. The reason for that is because the local revenue, property taxes and so forth across the state is up by about $20 million since their last estimate. As well as the, the overall statewide ADMW is down a little bit. So those help increase that number for, for each district. So, so that's, that's a big part of it. And then also our extended ADMW, if you look there in the middle, I always talk about the greater of this year or last year. You could see our extended ADMW they have for us for last year, for 1718, finished up at 4,521. Now that is, again, all of our regular ADM, includes the charter school ADM and then all of the weighted membership for IEP, ESL, poverty calculations, those types of things. And then they compare it to the current year and you could see that we're at 4,591 and that's, that's up 48 from the last estimate. And the reason for that is because the October 24th estimate was based simply on an estimate and the, this estimate that came out last week is based all the way through our second quarter actual reporting to the state for this year's ADM. Now, I do expect that number to come down slightly because again, it's not current enrollment, it's average daily membership. And we tend to have, have a higher number through the first part of the year and it tends to drop a little bit in the second half of the year. So by the time we get to the end of the year, that cumulative ADMW probably, I estimate, maybe drop about 20 or so. So you can kind of see the, kind of ebb and flow of how this works. Again, if you go back to the total formula revenue, if we just round it off to, to say 38 million, they subtract the $8 million there of 8,228,000. That's right now our estimated local revenue. And if you go back to the top left, you can see how that's itemized out, mostly property taxes, of course, federal forest fees, common school, county school and state managed timber. So that's our, our current updated estimate. So if you take that amount out, that, that 29,680, $680,126 is the amount that would actually come out of the state school fund funded by income taxes to Silver Falls School District. And they, they pay that out July through May, double payment in July and then a payment every month all the way through May. And they, they don't get this all reconciled until the following year after they get all the audit reports and do the adjustment the following May. So every state school fund year lives a 27-month life. So we won't get our final, final 1718 reconciled estimate until April into May. They'll do any adjustment, positive or negative. We'll get a few more, a couple more 1819 estimates this year and all the way through next year. And as of March 4th, we got our very first 1920 estimate. So we're in that time of year right now where three years are technically open. So I know that's a lot of detail and I know we, we go into it a couple of times a year, especially around budget time, and I thought it was timely because they came out with a new estimate and I wanted to let you know kind of where that, where that stood. So if you, if you go, well, the, the two sheets behind it, there's a front and back. That shows you how they get to our ADMW. So they list Silver Falls on its own and then the two charter schools and then that gets rolled together for that 4591 there in the middle. But you can see the additional weights that get added. So for example, for Silver Falls, you can see that our average daily membership regular with the R there through two quarters averaged 3,689. So that would just be straight enrollment, not including the charter schools. With kindergarten is counted as a 1.0. That used to be tricky because kindergartners were half in there, not anymore. So then you could see how the additional weighting comes into play. So, so of course, as you know, the, the charter school, state school fund money comes directly through to us with our money and then we, you know, pass it through to, to the charter schools and that's something we budget out in our budget so that they get their money in their, in their, on their books. So if you, if you roll it back to the front page on the financial statement, just a reminder that all of the items in the resource section with the asterisks are the items that roll into the state, the total formula revenue. So if you take all of the, the items with the asterisk, if you look at the bottom, you can see that our total actual year-to-date revenue for all of those items, again, local and state as part of the total formula revenue, received through February 28th is just over $30 million. And the estimate that we had, as I pointed out on the ODE sheet, the current estimate is now 37,908,000. So we still have $7.5 million to receive between now and the rest of the year. So because that's 95% of our revenue, I like to pull that out of there and kind of give you a gauge in terms of how we're doing in relation to that and so. Anyway, hope that makes sense. Expense, what's that?
Lots of details, but I think if I, as the actual funds are coming in, they've been revising up a little bit, so we're getting a little bit...
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah. I tend to be a little more, you know, conservative with the estimate, especially on the enrollment side. We have absolutely no control, obviously, as terms of what happens with the budget. You know, fortunately, we're in our, what, third straight biennial where they haven't, you know, had to cut the amount that they promised. And you never know what's going to happen with local revenue or enrollment statewide and that has, that'll, that'll, you know, adjust that, that per student number up or down depending on what's going on statewide. And of course, the factors just within your own district as well. So it's a little bit of everything.
Sure, lots of factors, but there's no, there's been no wild swings historically.
No, no wild swings.
For a while anyway.
Right. So expense-wise, we're right in line. You can see as of right now, we received 80% of our current resources, but we've expended just 57% of our planned expenditures, not including what's in the contingency and unappropriating fund balance. You can see, it's always interesting to look at the end of February, the instructional expenditures for salary and associated payroll costs, you can see they're right at 50%. That's a great test because we're exactly six out of 12 payrolls into the year for our licensed staff paid September through June with three checks in June. So, so anyway, we're looking, looking good there. I wanted to finish my comments tonight around update from the state. Again, good timing. As we talked about in our, in our sessions over the last week and a half, the next thing we were waiting for was the co-chairs' budget, the joint ways and means co-chairs' budget. That came out late last Thursday afternoon and I'm going to send out a, an email for the budget committee that I have some, some summary type attachments that do a good job of breaking it down a little bit, but I just wanted to give you a few highlights tonight. The good news is they budgeted for, for schools $100, $100 million more than the, their projected current service level. Now, we don't know if that's really the right number, the current service level. Unfortunately, it's $100 million less than the governor's recommended budget. So for the second straight budget cycle, biennial budget cycle for the state, the co-chairs' budget has come in below the governor's budget. Could have been worse. We were hearing 200 below. So the governor's recommended, well, the co-chairs' budget is at 8.871 base state school fund budget. That doesn't include the funding for the Measure 98. That mirrors what the governor recommended, current service level for that. And the governor's recommended budget, base budget was 8.972 billion. So at least with the release of the co-chairs' budget, that kind of gets things moving and gets some debate going. The crux of the co-chairs' budget is they were going to cut the state general fund budget 5% in order to balance the state budget, but both K12 education and the Oregon Health Plan are to be held harmless. So that's the message coming from the co-chairs. They said that any additional supplemental funding for the state school fund may become available from new revenues passed by the Joint Committee on Student Success. So it really is going to come down to what that committee recommends and what they feel that they could, could afford. So that'll be probably where, well, you know, there'll be a lot going on with that, I think, over the month of March and I'm sure into April as well. I think those are really all the highlights I had. I think overall, it's, it's pretty good news. I think that there's going to be a lot of work by COSA and, and school districts to pass on information and impacts and, and maybe testimony in terms of trying to get the number bumped up a little bit. But, but that's, that's where, that's where it starts. That's, that's where it all starts, so.
Yes. No, good report. Any other questions for Steve?
Have the proposed numbers, what would that mean in your, for next year's budget? I mean, what, like, so obviously it's a new biennial and there's a lot of moving parts. We have the PERS increasing, you know. If it sticks at what they're saying, what is your opinion that that would be for, for the state?
Well, it's hard to say. You know, we're just, just trying to put everything together with all the inflation that we know built in, but for example, we, we do have bargaining still, for example, and I'm trying to, you know, project it, you know, a couple of different scenarios and I'm not comfortable saying, you know, you know, one way or another exactly what that would do without getting through the exercise a little bit more. I did want to wait to see, I always like to use the lowest number that we have, in this case, the co-chairs, to, you know, to run the budget through, knowing that that's probably going to be our worst-case scenario. And I'm just not, you know, we, we just got this data, yeah, so I'll definitely have an update soon on that.
But at our last meeting, Andy commented that at the governor's number, we would be probably dipping into reserves in order to maintain services. Is that, am I summarizing correctly?
Yes. Yeah, I, how much that, that was an estimate at the time, but yes, we, we believe we'll have to dip into reserves with the PERS impact and knowing what we have in regard to, knowing what our current service level and knowing that we have some other pretty hefty expenditures coming up next year.
All right, good report. Any more questions? Okay, let's move on. Brett Davison, come on up to talk about Silverton Middle School.
Good evening, thank you. I feel like I was just here a couple of months ago, because I think I was. And so I'll try to focus on the things that have changed. Not, I mean, not a ton has, has changed, but just a few shout-outs to what our staff is doing and how we're changing focus on a couple of things as we look to finish out the year. A lot of that information on top, we went through last time, so I won't focus on that too much. Some things that have happened that I talked about before, the Art Lunch and Learn. Shannon Chandler is our teacher, brings in the community, parents, lots of kids to do a very student-centered presentation of the amazing work that her art students do and that was a big success. Leslie Teigen and Hillary Combs put together the Career Day at the middle school where we bring in 20-plus speakers from different careers of people in the community and our kids choose four of those and they go listen to a half, 20, half-hour presentation of someone who's a doctor, someone who's a firefighter, police officer, just to get them engaged a little bit and thinking about their future. And that was a, that was a big success. And also I had hired back Mr. O, Mr. Osterhout, one period a day to do advanced drama and we took a little field trip over to the high school for his kids to put on a production over there. That's one of the benefits of being right next to the high schools, we can just walk over and use their nice facilities sometimes. We're also in the middle of, you know, our restructuring of AG. Most of that I talked about last time. One thing I just wanted to add to that was, one of the things we wanted to do was take a pulse of where the kids were and what they were dealing with and then structure a lot of the stuff we did in AG based off of that. So we did kind of a climate survey and looked for trends and things that were coming up and then we pick what we talk about in our SCL curriculum based off of that. So we've gone over, social media stuff is obviously something that is a big deal. Talked about empathy, cliques and exclusion, especially middle school level. That's an important thing to talk about. Happiness, friendship, and right now we're in the middle of interests outside of school to kind of pair up with forecasting for high school, especially for eighth grade, and get them thinking about those kind of things. And I'll talk a little bit more about eighth grade at the end because we've definitely shifted our focus with what we're doing with them. Couple of things too, we, to go along with the attendance push as the district, we've made an explicit effort with that, especially through Jesse Larson is one of our secretaries who focuses on attendance. And I, and I believe that you can come up with all the programs and procedures that you want, but if you don't have the right person in the job, it doesn't matter. And great people will take that job and make it even more than you expected and Jesse's a great example of that. I just said I want you to dive into attendance and see what you can do and she's just taken it way farther than I ever would have been able to come up with. She's super creative. She's, has dozens of personal contacts with families, working through hard issues and all sorts of things, just to see if we can do anything to get, you know, those chronically absent kids into school more. And so a big shout-out to her because she's making a big difference. I talked before about Interact Club, that's going strong with Darby Hector and Jan Deliskey, which is fun to have them come in a couple of times a month. And we're gearing up for a couple of things. Service Learning Day, April 8th is where we basically take the day, that's one of the early release days, and we spread out through town and serve the community in different ways. So some kids will be going up to the falls, some to the Oregon Gardens, some in the neighborhood, some on our own campus, just to give back and serve and work a little bit and get our hands dirty and just give back to our community. Daniel Jamsa is the, the brainchild behind that and the organizer of that and it's a, it's a fun day to be a part of. a, it's a fun day to be a part of. Mary Hayden came to me with an idea a few months ago, and we're moving forward with putting together what we're calling the Falcon Run, which is a chip trail track like the high school has around their, the perimeter of their campus, and wanting to do a similar thing on our campus, too. And it's actually the exact same distance as the high school one, and we're, we have the track there, so we could make it a mile run and do some, you know, fundraising things and just some, you know, start to build some traditions. And so, we're working with the Facilities Department and the high school and making sure we're doing things right, but we're wanting to move ahead with that and have something cool for the community and for our kids to, to help build and just be a part of. A couple of the goals that I have that haven't changed from last time, but I'll maybe just expand on a couple of things. We, we are an integral part in that graduation goal of the district. I mean, everybody in our district is, and we want to take that really seriously. And like Andy shared with the ninth grade on-track-to-graduate number, that's a number that I want to pay particular attention to, because that matters, especially at semester. How are the, how are our eighth graders going to high school and how are they incorporating and being successful? And so, we want to focus on that a lot. And, and one of the things, and this maybe sounds cliche, but my first bullet point right there is just great teaching in the classroom. We talk about engagement. Michelle was up here earlier, her and a bunch of social studies teachers. Just last week, I went through a bunch of classrooms and they're all doing super creative, student-led, student-driven projects and presentations that are, that just showcase what students are learning and, and kind of puts the onus on them to, to show that learning in really creative ways. And so, that's happening, and, and everybody, I feel like our, our staff this year is just really focused on, we all just want to get better, we're all on the same team and, and moving in a really positive direction. And I, I just see that as I walk around our school each and every day. Down below, on the, on the bottom, I put in parentheses, under the students will earn at least six high school credits by completion of ninth grade. One of the things we're talking about in the visioning process is that we're going to send kids out of the high school life-ready. And so, a version of that is, we need to send kids to the high school, high school-ready. I mean, and, and I believe it's a version of life-ready. It's not just academics, it's, it's social, it's a connection to other people, it's learning how to interact, all those different things. And so, that's why the AG process and the SCL curriculum and, and teaching different skills and what kids are dealing with is really important to us, but then also, also making that bond with us in the high school really strong. So, I said before I was going to talk about this, but for eighth grade second semester, we've sort of detached from the regular SCL curriculum, and we're completely focusing on the high school. So, one of the issues that we've seen before is kids don't really understand forecasting sheets and curriculum guides and what a prerequisite is, and all those different things that you have to navigate immediately when you get to high school, because now it matters more than it ever has before. And so, we got ahold of the curriculum guide, the high school was nice enough to sneak me some copies about three weeks before the counselors came, and we just had them in eighth grade classrooms, and we were looking through them and having kids just ask a million questions. We took a short little field trip over to the high school and met up with junior AGs at the high school and had four or five juniors sit in those AGs while our kids asked them all sorts of random questions. And some of them are serious and some of them, you know, weren't, but it was overall really, really productive. We waited for the bell to ring, and I made them walk through the hall during a passing period when they're at the high school, and that led to a couple of days discussion at the middle school about what that was going to be like. I want them to feel what it's like to be at the high school and just have a better understanding of what they're going to run into, both academically and just into hallways. And so, we did that all before the counselors came over, so when the counselors came over, they, they actually had a pretty good handle on things. And then, I just want to keep that ball rolling. So, starting next week and then the week after, Heather Basher and a bunch of club advisors and activity advisors are going to come over during our AG period, and they're going to talk about all the things that you can be involved with in the high school. And then, the week after that, we're going to have kids involved in all those activities come over to the middle school, and so they hear it from kids, because adults, we can tell them, you need to be involved in this or this, but we're just all old and whatever. But if a kid comes over and says, this is what I'm doing right now and it's awesome, that, that makes an impact on, on our eighth graders. And I just want to keep, keep doing that with our eighth grade AGs as we go through the spring. If you know Mrs. Drescher, I want Mrs. Drescher to come over and I want them to talk to Mrs. Drescher about behavior in the high school. I want, you know, Wade to come over and ta, I mean, I want as much contact with the high school as we can, so by the time fall rolls around, they, they're like, yeah, I'm ready to go, and I'm ready to be connected. And that's really important for us in terms of that transition to high school, because I think that, that's a big thing. And I, and I, more than anything, I want them to go to the high school and just be connected to one positive thing or one positive person, preferably both, before they start, because that alone will make their chances of success just that much higher. And so, that's, that's our main focus in second semester of, of eighth grade. And I, you know, I, besides that, I mean, there's a bunch of other little things I could talk about, but we, I feel like we're going in a really good direction. The, the staff is, is great, and things have just been really positive this year, and we're just going to keep plugging away. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Just appreciate your intentionality around the life-ready goal. That's great.
Yeah. I like that one a lot.
Especially at that age. Yeah. Brett, I think that early immersion into the high school experience is a great segue for them. It, I think it takes a lot of the fear and anxiety out of it, too.
Yeah.
Which is wonderful.
There were kids huddling around their eighth grade, big kid, big eighth graders, huddling around their eighth grade AG teacher, saying, no, I want to walk right next to you. And they, and they said, no, you're going to walk, you know the way to go, and they just sent them on their way. And it, it was good. It led to a lot of good discussion.
Yeah. Good deal.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett. Okay, next up is Greg Cots, talk about Mark Twain.
I have a couple of staff members that came tonight. They don't have front committee atmosphere, but they can come up and, they're a big part of what we do and a big part of what I'm going to talk about today. Got first grade, I've got Mrs. Weekin, who's a little slow coming on. My counselor, Carolyn Jones, and my DLU teacher.
Hello.
She said, I'm not coming in.
So, I was here in the fall for board presentation. We have some great data to share based on our district-wide goals, so I'll kind of jump right in. I think that when I, as I was putting together our board report, I was thinking a lot about one of the recent trainings that we had for administrators, and one of the key words that stuck with me was the term, not highest needs to, most vulnerable population. You know, I was taught, thinking about equity and, and thoughts when you're going to put programs and systems together, and it was, the term was, you know, what are you going to do for your most vulnerable population? So, for us, I feel like our building is a building full of the most vulnerable population because of their age, and then when you add in some other factors or challenges that students have, whether it's learning a second language, or it's dealing with a disability, or it's maybe just being behind in math or reading and needing interventions, or any of the social-emotional components, that, that really, that really stands out to me as a most vulnerable population. So, we are very intentional, I feel like, at our building, and some of the results will show that. So, the first one is current attendance percentage. We do very well. Our goal is ninety-five percent. We're at ninety-four point two four percent, and I feel like we've been hit by the bug a little bit. We've had a lot of kids out. We are very intentional with students that miss, so we have already gone through two rounds of phone calls and letters home to all of those students who are at eighty-nine percent attendance rate and lower. So, we target some of those kids unless there's a specific reason that we know a family was out. On-track graduation is the next one. So, currently, English and Language Arts, I broke it out, kindergarten, they are, and this is based on the district assessment, the seventy-eight percent at or above grade level, and they are currently on pace to exceed ninety percent, which is, which is a very good number. The last two years, I want to feel like we were right about ninety percent. First grade, currently are at sixty-two percent. First grade is a little bit of a transitional year, and so there is one assessment that is very age-appropriate for kindergartners, developing into readers, and then there is a, they transition, once they exceed that assessment, they transition to a different assessment that is a, you have to be a reader to get through it. It's a very challenging assessment, and first grade is a difficult year because they're not quite ready at the beginning of the year to read their own assessment. And so, what, one of the, one of the numbers that I'll, that I put in the board report there was that ninety-two percent of our students actually attempted it, because they start off in the first assessment. The district average is seventy-two percent of the students in our school district actually even attempt the STAR test at this point in the school year. So, we have ninety-two percent of our students have attempted the STAR test, sixty-two percent are at or a grade level. The district average for students in first grade taking that test is sixty-four percent. So, we're a little bit under, but we have a lot more students taking the test, I feel like. And, let's see, second grade, second grade's at seventy-four percent, which at this time last year is nine percentage points higher than last year's second grade class. The district average is seventy-four percent, so we're right on pace with that, and we, we are on track to be at about eighty-five percent or to exceed eighty-five percent at or above grade level, which is a great number for us in second grade. In terms of math, math is a real strong point for our, our building and our students. Seventy-four percent of the stu, or excuse me, ninety-four percent of our first graders are at or above grade level, which is eight percentage points higher than this time last year. We are on pace to be ninety-nine percent at or above by the tail end of the school year, so that's a, that's an exceptional number for us. The district average is ninety-two percent, so we're a little bit above that. Second grade, eighty-seven percent of our students are at or above grade level, the district average is eighty percent. We are thirteen percentage points higher than we were at this time last year. So, students are making some really good gains, and I think when we talk as a staff and, and when I look at it as the building leader, I think one of the things that we try really, really hard to impact, we're not going to control students, because that, we all know that's a losing battle. Anybody with kids know you're not going to control kids, but you can impact them and you can be thoughtful about behaviors that you're going to teach to, you know, intended behaviors is what we're looking at. So, we have some, we have some steps that we've taken, we have six things that I feel like are really impacting our building and helping students to learn how to access their education. So, social-emotional learning, just learning how to be students, learning how to follow the rules, learning how to feel some calm, learning how to listen to their teachers and be respectful of the students in the classroom. So, I think our academics are improving compared to last year because of some of the great work we do in terms of behavior and a great environment for them to access their education. So, six things that are really making a difference this year that are either new or improved, and all six of these things have attributed to forty percent reduction in, in our referral tracking system. So, when I came and previously presented, two years ago, our first year in the building, we were, we track at about a thousand referrals a year. So, a thousand behavior trackers, and sometimes they're minor things, sometimes they are major things. The second year, we tried some things, and we were thoughtful about, we're going to make, going to have a great new year this year, and we really want to impact that number, and we ended up at a thousand. So, that felt a little, a little like a failure, and so we got outside the box. One of the programs that I'll talk about is new, there's some other things here that I'll get into detail with, but this year, we're on track to reduce that number and, and end up the year at about six hundred referrals. So, it's a forty percent change, that's, it's, it's been really, really big. And subjectively, I have heard some of the teachers comment that we have, we have a, we didn't just, we had a Plan A and a Plan B, and then after that, it was a little gray. So, now there is definitely a feel of Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, Plan D, Plan E. So, we have plans for kids, and some of the, some of the things that we're doing are working, and the data is showing that. So, number one is our caring school community curriculum, the social-emotional curriculum delivered by the classroom teachers. That's been an outstanding addition this year in its first year. Number two is a wellness room pilot program. We're in the first year of running a wellness room, or we call it a kit den, and it's a social-emotional learning intervention. So, students that go through a process of being identified that that student is having trouble with one of our social-emotional learning standards, could be self-regulation, could be responsible decision-making, could be self-discipline. They go through an intervention where we are explicitly instructing them, this is what self-regulation feels like, this is your goal, this is what we're trying to do, and they come to a specific room for that, and then they return back to class. So, it's a pull-out intervention model.
Oh, excuse me, Greg.
Yeah.
How, how long are they in that program?
So, students come in, anywhere from fifteen to twenty minutes intervention, and it's, it's a one-on-one or one-on-two intervention with my counselor or my counselor's assistant. She has tracked, she has tracked data, and her goal this year was to reduce the number, so of those students that access intervention, by the end of the year, the goal was to reduce their referrals by fifty percent. And you're also talking about a student that comes in there, may have fifty referrals in a school year or more, and to reduce them to twenty-five referrals, let's say. So, she, she has students that are anywhere from ninety-five to a hundred percent referral reduction. Some of them have exited the program because they have learned and put themselves in a position to be able to regulate in school where before that was a challenge for them or they just didn't have the skills yet that was a lagging skill for them.
That's awesome.
Very good. She does an outstanding job in there. Third is Playworks recess training. We are one of a handful of schools in the district that have brought in a, a program called Playworks. It's basically specific instruction and helping you navigate recess, making sure that recess is structured and there are plans in place as interventions or coordinated games, thinking about what students are interested in, how students use the playground, if there is a conflict, the ability to problem-solve and resolve conflict appropriately. Our referrals at recess time are down by forty percent this year, so that has been another layer that has benefited us. A de-escalation room, we have a, we have a separate space, it's basically an empty office, it's a de-escalation room, we call it the comfort, the comfort den, the comfort room, and it's a place for students to either select themselves to go, like, for example, if they're having trouble in the classroom, you might have a, a break room or a timeout space, we don't call it timeout, but a break room so kids can go and reset, and if they can't do that, they need an additional layer of intervention. They can choose to come to the comfort room on their own, a teacher may give them a pass. Every, every student accesses it a little bit differently, but it's a place where there's nothing in the room. There's a little mattress and a blanket, there's a little beanbag, but they can come in and they can be by themselves and take five minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes and reset, and when they're ready, they can return to class, and some students need that. You think of an adult, when, when we as adults get ticked off, we say, like, I got to go for a walk, or I got to leave, don't talk to me, I got to leave. Well, students don't, they don't have that skill yet, so they cry or throw a tantrum or throw a chair or yell at you or something like that. So, that's our method of teaching them to recognize their emotion and take a break and come back when they're ready. So, some kids need two minutes, some kids need twenty minutes, and so that has provided a place that does not disrupt the rest of our building or that classroom.
Are the kids, are the kids learning to verbalize through all these processes about what's?
Yeah. So, we, we use a, we use a, that's emotion recognition. And we use a program called the Zones of Regulation. It's a very simple program that basically, if a student is ready to learn, they're in the green zone, and we have little animated characters that demonstrate what green is. Green is calm, green is happy, green is ready to learn. Then there's a yellow zone, which is slightly elevated, maybe I'm a little frustrated, a little anxious, and then there is a red zone, which is throwing a fit, throwing a tantrum, unregulated. It mirrors the crisis cycle, which we try to train staff on. There's also a fourth zone, that is the blue zone, which is, I'm sick, I'm sad, I'm depressed. And so, all of our students are educated in those zones of regulation, and they, if you ask them, a lot of times when I end up dealing with students, I ask them, like, hey, if you had to choose a color, what zone would you be in right now? They can tell you, so that answers your question. They can tell you, so that answers your question. That's how we do that. We, we use the Zones of Regulation. And they're, the kids are very good at it. They're very good at it.
That's the battle is getting to verbalize before bills explode.
And then teaching them skills to move from one zone to the next. If you're in a yellow zone, how do you get back to green so you can go back to class and access your learning?
Sure.
The fifth is Trillium Services. We, our district has used Trillium before at the, correct me if I'm wrong, Dana, at the middle school and Robert Frost were previously, and that's a, that's a, families who have OHP are eligible for Trillium Services, it's counseling services. So we added our site to that, and we have a counselor from Trillium that comes in. Students are referred, and if they are, if everything checks out and they end up being approved, they can have their counseling from an outside counseling agent in our building. So we just picked up on the other two schools that have been doing that. That has been another layer. We have about 10 students right now that have, that are accessing that program. It starts off with a family intake session, and then it's once a week with the students. So play therapy can be just talking through things, and a great outlet for some of our highest need student in that mental health area. And then the last one is some PBIS improvements. We've been, obviously been a PBIS school, very intentional with our language being positive with students, recognizing desired behaviors, walking, being kind, making safe choices, those types of things. So we have some additional signage in our building this year. We have refined our reward system, we made some, made some improvements from last year. We add assemblies, we have some additional awards that are class awards or class rewards. Students, students get to choose if they are, if they are lucky enough to, to earn a reward, and so that piece has been really, really good. But I think, I think those six layers are really impacting our environment and our building, and I think it's showing in our academic numbers. So that, we've always known, and I'm going to talk about this next, but we've always known that the first thing that we have to be intentional about is the behaviors in our, in our school, and managing all of those students and teaching them explicitly what it means to be in school. So we have, we ran, as part of our Title I Schoolwide Improvement Plan, we ran an interest survey, and so we surveyed 119 second graders, and we surveyed parents, and we surveyed staff. Second graders responded by ranking things that they like at school. We gave them basically nine areas from core, not excluding core classes, so no English or math or anything like that. And top three, you have, you have through five in your board report, but top three were art, PE, and STEAM or STEM activities. Those are, those are things that the kids really, really love and are a big part of their day. Parent survey, parents, and I got 172 responses, so we're at 50% or more, actually got a couple more today, but I was really, really impressed, we, to have that much response back on a, on a survey. So 50% response, number one was STEM or STEAM activities, they, they wrote down as priority. Number two was guidance and SEL curriculum, which I thought was very telling, that they understand the counseling side of things, the social emotional learning side of things, the mental health side of things, because a lot of conversations we have with parents when they go home is, my kid doesn't listen to me, or they're not doing what I asked them to do, or they give me attitude, or those are all examples of students or children having trouble with social emotional skills, and, and it's important to teach them. So we work very closely with parents on that. I thought it was very telling that they had that marked as number two. And then number three was PE. And I, there was not a place to add comment, but if, if adults have something to say, they find a way to say it. And so these parents wrote down four, I had four surveys come back at 172 that had, they found a little blank space to write a little comment in there, so they were, they were very good, so I, I thought I would share them today. So number one was, and this is just one comment, so I just gave the four comments. More recess than PE keep the students moving, which we try to do, and we try to do that, and we try to do that throughout the day. Foreign languages, which I thought was interesting. Anti-bullying and additional social emotional learning instruction, and then social emotional learning instruction specifically problem-solving skills. So I think we do two of those automatically. PE is always in there, foreign languages, I thought was an interesting new one that a parent thought important this year. And then our staff was surveyed, 35 staff member responses. Number one was social emotional learning interventions. Number two was guidance and social emotional learning lessons, so a little bit of difference there. We've got the guidance lessons and lessons in the classroom by the teachers, and then the SEL interventions is our kit den that our counselor Carolyn and her assistant lead. And then number three, which is very important in our building, is academic interventions for reading and math. So we are charged with the responsibility of making sure that when kids leave our building at second grade, they are as close to grade level as we can possibly get them, because once they get past the third grade, if they are, the research says that if they're not at grade level, the rest of their academic years in school are going to be very, very challenging. So we spend a lot of time on early interventions, and academics interventions is one of them, and, you know, we are continuing to show growth, so I think that's great. When we, when we budget, we just went through a budgeting input activity, and so we seek input from our staff, and this is, this is interesting because it's two years in a row of the exact same priorities. Number one is interventions, both academic and social emotional interventions. Number two is staffing and educational assistance, which we bumped up from last year, and that's for supervision and assistance in the classroom. Little kids, our building's not set up to utilize older kids because we only go up to the second grade, and so the only way we can add additional support is through another builder and ed assistant. And then lastly was literacy and library support, basically supporting, supporting, teaching kids, teaching kids how to, how to read, so that as they get older, when their skills solidify, they can read to learn. Last, the last piece was kind of a fun piece, I thought I'd end on a good note, it's a lot of, it's a lot of data in there throwing at you guys, but we had a special project that literally just materialized within the last few weeks. We had two second graders, absolutely on their own, through their teacher and through some conversations with me, they, they, they said they wanted to clean up around the campus. They wanted to, they wanted to pick up garbage, there was just too much garbage, and they wanted to find a way to pick up that garbage and help our animals and our wildlife. It was, it was actually very interesting listening to them go down the whole list of, of things that they were going to change with respect to picking up garbage, but they made a little video, the second grade teacher shared that video with the rest of the school, second grade only, and these students put together a campus cleanup crew, and the, this past Thursday, 55 students volunteered during their recess time to pick trash for 15 minutes. It was pretty incredible, and it was all student-led, it was a pretty, pretty feel-good story. So they did an outstanding job, and we have plans to improve that a little bit. We're actually going to widen and let them go out, kind of to the sidewalks, maybe a little bit outside of campus in our area there, and we're going to, we're going to talk to our SRO officer about maybe having a little 15, 20 minute window, or maybe we have some Silverton police kind of help us with some control there and let kids go out and help, help pick up around our school. So I thought that was a nice little, a nice little story to end on. Lots of info, any questions for me?
No, great report.
I have one question.
Yeah.
About the de-escalation room.
Yes.
Is that staffed by, it's not staffed by a teacher?
It's not staffed, no. So we have a variety of ways the student can come down there. The, the door remains open, so we make sure the door is open. Some students come down by themselves, and they just want to go in there and they want to sit. It's right next to my office, so I kind of monitor that, but anytime a student goes in there, I usually touch base with them and ask them, you know, kind of like, hey, how's it going? Did you choose to come down here? Did your teacher have a little conversation with them? And they're like, I just need some time. Or they'll ask, set a timer or something like that. So they come down on their own. Sometimes kids are in there and they don't want to be in there, and so we follow some, we follow our rules and our process for students who are in there, so they might be supervised the whole time, door open if possible. We do have some situations where things escalate and stuff, and if that happens, we just follow our rules, and we may have to close the door, but a staff member is in supervision, that's what we want to do. So, yeah. Yep.
And just one comment.
Yes, sir.
Impressed by everything, but the Zones of Regulation, you know, with the multicolored cards, I think I want to incorporate it in my own daily walks, so when I'm the eighth person in the Safeway line, I'm going to hold up my gun.
Not going well, not going well.
Leave me alone.
Your warning light.
Yeah, the warning light. No, but this is actually, it's, it's really impressive, so kudos to you.
Yeah, a lot of credit, those are the staff, they did an outstanding job, and, and they are tasked with doing a lot. I think they're tasked with doing more and more every year. I think the standards increase, the stakes are higher, and, you know, in some cases, students come to us with, with some lagging skills that it's really important to address first before we can even begin to teach them how to read and write.
Yeah, hats off to all you guys up there.
Yeah.
Heard some amazing things, especially Carolyn, your work there this year. I mean, what a change in your, apart from the last couple of years. I know these are the goals you guys had, so good job, it's awesome.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to see the chicken, you're welcome to come on, it's very easy. If you're stressed, you don't come on.
Yeah. How do you get to that de-escalation room?
Right, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Okay, next up is board reports. I just got a couple of, a couple of things to go through. The next, our next work session on March 18th, we're going to cancel that, and I talked earlier, we don't have much of an agenda, we can just move those items to the next work session. And that, our, our, the February 11th regular board meeting, it was not posted on the internet, it wasn't, there was no sound, for some reason, or some kind of malfunction, so there was, there was no sound, just video, so they elected not to post it. So that's, that's the reason why some, why you can't, if you're looking to watch that meeting on, on, online, you can't. Anybody else have any, have any board reports? Jennifer, would you like to talk about, or?
Would you like to talk about?
No, I'm talking enough, could you please?
So on Tuesday, Tom and I went, took advantage of the OSBA's invitation to lobby at the Capitol for school funding, and we did. We joined with other school board members and superintendent to travel to different legislators' offices, and talking about how we really would appreciate the QEM, the Quality Education Model level of funding, and talked about the difference between the governor and the co-chairs' budget and how that might affect us. Tom actually got on his phone right away and asked Andy, how, how would this affect us? And so we were able to give that message to legislators, and especially one in particular was very interested to know how that would impact our personal district, so I thought that was, that was a great addition to the conversation. And it was just interesting, you know, it's politics, and I don't begin to understand all of the plans that people, you know, are trying to make, and, but we just, I think that same message, if we keep sending it, that we really need that QEM. Like, we were talking about what level we needed to be at to maintain services, but my personal message was that's not enough. We need, we need additional, so, to that QEM model. So I, I thought it was, it was, it was an interesting experience, and I think it was probably worthwhile. Thanks, Tom, for meeting me there.
Well, thanks for, you were, it was, you were the one who mentioned it at the, at the work session, you were going. I chatted you up a little bit afterwards, saying, hey, tell them this, tell them that, and you said, yeah, okay, yeah. I was driving home thinking, well, jeez, maybe I just ought to go myself.
You didn't trust me.
So I just showed up, and I thought, so, it was good, I'm glad, thank you for, thank you for going, and, you know, allowing me to tag along. And it's interesting, because we, when we got there, they had just announced the co-chairs' budget, and it was going to be, big 200 million? It was 200 million below. And maybe all those, maybe all those school board members running around the halls, the co-chairs came back with 100 million, they, so, you know, maybe we're all making a difference. It's like, you know, like I said, it's like coming to, it's like coming to the school board meeting, and the room's full of people, you know that people are upset and something's going on, and so there was, there was lots of school board members walking around the halls lobbying, doing their best.
Yeah, and I, I think it was important to note that, you know, we, if we support our legislators in, you know, going for larger numbers, and that, you know, we talk to the people that we know, because we are the largest number of elected folks in our area, and so we do kind of make a difference, they think, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, it was good. In our group, it was us two, can't remember the lady's name, from, school board member from Mount Angel.
Donna.
Donna. And an OSB member, OSBA member, Taz Morrison, she's from the Sandy Am School District. So the four of us, it was like four or five groups of us.
And then Palomar, there was a group from Palomar.
Oh, yeah.
Which is, you know, out of our area.
Well, we kind of joined, and it kind of, we had a plan, and then it just kind of just morphed into all kinds of groups, but it was, it was, it was good, it was very good. So, yeah. Anybody else have anything else they'd like to share?
I can share one thing, I didn't mention it last month, but I am planning to run for Zone 6 in May, so I'd like to make that official.
All right, good, thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all right, next up is our public comment, second public comment period, limited to discussion and action items. Anybody have anything to share? Okay, move on to the action items. First up is our 2019 Budget Development Goals. Anybody have a motion?
Move for approval, the goals as, as written.
One second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is, next action item is the 2018-19 School Year Calendar Adjustment. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, a motion for approval.
Oh, we should state what we're, the change.
What are we stating? That April 26 is going to be the makeup date for the last number?
We'll change the student.
Or change the student contact, excuse me.
Was no teacher makeup due? Or is that the?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, we already.
Inaction means no action.
Okay, got it, okay.
I, I will ask Ron if you could clarify or consider adding, with agreement by Silver Falls Education Association, because it is a collective bargaining matter, and, and so if, if the, the board, the board does not have unilateral authority to add April 26, but I've heard the association say they're willing to, so I think the motion should reflect their willingness, or, or at least their intent to agree.
So with the, with the motion for the SFEA approval of, what, April 26 as a student contact?
Yeah, something like that. Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Okay, we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Okay, motion carries. All right, that ends our agenda. Does anybody else have anything to add? Okay, sign then, meeting adjourned. Thanks for coming.